Let's go ahead and start the St. Lucie County School Board Regular Meeting, December 13th, starting at 5:00. If you all would, please stand, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and say the kids that hope pledge with us. As adults and treasures hunter, search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and you. So capable of success, no exceptions. All right, please be seated real quickly. At this moment, if you'd like to be an unscheduled speaker, there's unscheduled speaker forums in the back, and before we hit the consent agenda, just please turn them over to the Recording Secretary on my left, Chris Harrison. As you know, we are missing a board member. Mr. Kelly is not feeling well today, so just keep him on your thoughts and prayers, and hopefully he's ready for Christmas. Right now, we're going to turn this over to Alapata Flats, Mr. Roberts, and this is the Alapata Flats Middle School Chorus. And we thank you all for being here, and parents, thank you for coming to... Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
Last Christmas, I gave you my heart, but the very next day, you gave it away. This year, to save me from tears, I'll give it to someone special. Last Christmas, I gave you my heart, but the very next day, you gave it away. This year, to save me from tears, I'll give it to someone special. Once bitten, twice tried, I keep my distance, but you still catch my eye. Tell me, baby, do you recognize me? Well, since then, it doesn't surprise me. Merry Christmas, I wrapped it up and sent it, with a note saying, "I love you," unhanding. Now I know what a fool I've been, but if you kiss me now, I know you'll fool me again. Last Christmas, I gave you my heart, but the very next day, you gave it away. This year, to save me from tears, I'll give it to someone special. Last Christmas, I gave you my heart, but the very next day, you gave it away. This year, to save me from tears, I'll give it to someone special. Crowded room, birds desire eyes, I'm hiding from you, and you're so bright. My bad, I thought you were someone to rely on. Me, I guess I was the shoulder to cry on. A face on a lover with a fire in his heart, a man undercover, but you tore me apart. Ooh, now I've found a real love who never fooled me again. Last Christmas, I gave you my heart, but the very next day, you gave it away. This year, to save me from tears, I'll give it to someone special. Last Christmas, I gave you my heart, but the very next day, you gave it away. This year, to save me from tears, I'll give it to someone special. A face on a lover with a fire in his heart, a man undercover, but you tore me apart. And ooh, I'll give it to someone, I'll give it to someone special.
Well, thank you, Alapata Flats, with Principal Ms. Rodriguez, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Anna Rodriguez is in the back, Ms. Nelson, Assistant Principal Nelson, Assistant Principal Allen, thank you all for coming out. And if you're a parent, would you please stand and please be recognized? We want to thank you for coming out, parents, please. Great, we got three or four. Good, thank you for coming out. Thank you, students, Alapata Flats, excellent job. It's always good to have students come and bring the energy up a little bit. Let's go ahead and start, we're going to open it up with, what are we going to do here? Public hearing on the adoption of job descriptions, and I'm going to open that up if anyone would like to come forth and speak on this issue or topic. Seeing no one, that's that... I'm going to go ahead and close this. Board members have any discussion on this? No? I'm going to turn it over to the Superintendent for his recommendation.
I recommend the board adopt the job descriptions as rules.
Board members, you have the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved that we...
I have a motion.
So moved that we move the adoption, the job descriptions of rules.
I have a motion by Dr. Mills, do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Mr. Superintendent, I'm going to turn it over to you for special orders.
And I will turn it over to our Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Martin. Lydia?
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. At this time, we have a very special recognition, and that is our Art in the Capitol Contest winner. The Art in the Capitol Competition is a statewide visual art competition for Florida students in grades six through eight. Each school district is required to hold an annual art competition with the artwork judged by a selection committee. The winning art from each district is then displayed in the Capitol for the rest of the year. So it is my pleasure to be able to recognize and have her come forward as Amelia Sides from Palm Point Educational Research School, her amazing piece of artwork. And at this time, I'd like to invite Heather Clark, Executive Director of Exceptional Student Education and Student Services, to the podium to help us recognize our PBIS model schools.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. This evening, we have the honor of recognizing 14 St. Lucie Public Schools as Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Model Schools. To achieve model school status, each school must meet rigorous criteria established by the University of South Florida PBIS Project. Schools must provide evidence of implementing positive behavior supports and interventions at all levels, reducing discipline referrals, in-school and out-of-school suspensions, and ensuring equitable outcomes for all demographic subgroups. This year, we're pleased to share that seven schools achieved Platinum Status. That's the most schools that have ever achieved Platinum Status in our district. One school achieved Gold, two schools achieved Silver, and four achieved Bronze. In addition to receiving the plaques, each school will also receive additional funds to purchase items to support their PBIS Project. That's something new this year that we would like to give back to our schools. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our district's support team. First and foremost, and this is a little bit off the script, I'd like to thank Mr. Robert O'Neill, who has led the PBIS Project for 17 years, and he will be retiring. Robert will be retiring, come on up, Robert, at the end of this school year, and we wanted to give him the recognition that he deserves. In addition, our other leads in our district, Ms. Esther Rivera, who could not be with us this evening... Robert, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I survived six superintendents and five department head chairs.
Also, our district support team, Ms. Esther Rivera, she's unable to be here this evening, she's at a conference, Amber Minarchek, who is under the weather, and our PBS team lead, Mrs. Catherine Hedke, who has been working side-by-side with Mr. O'Neill for the past couple of years. Now, we would like to invite our school administrators and designees to come forward to receive their award. We'll first recognize our Platinum Schools, Bay Shore Elementary School, Palm Point, Mariposa Elementary, Morningside Elementary, Southport Middle, Westgate K-8, and Wimmel Point Elementary School. Congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize our Gold, Silver, and Bronze Schools. Parkway Elementary, unless they scooted in a little bit later, are not able to be here this evening. We also have Rivers Edge Elementary, and Mr. Ingersoll, we expect that you will accept the award on your wife's behalf. Savannah Ridge Elementary, Fairlon Elementary, Floresta Elementary, Lawnwood Elementary, and White City Elementary. Congratulations. Oh, you're here for Parkway, we got it.
And that concludes our special orders for this evening.
And let's go ahead and turn this over to the ESOL report.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, board members, Superintendent Prince. First of all, I'd like to say I'm happy to be back. It feels like it's been forever since I've been here, and I... It's kind of weird I realize how much I miss the opportunity to speak to you both individually and here at the board meetings. I don't have a whole lot to say this evening, which is unusual also, but I will say I have a little bit of a mixed bag this evening, but I'm reminded of how important our collaborative relationship is. We were able, recently, the district and the union, to resolve an issue that in most districts would have been explosive, to say the least. It took us some time, but we worked through a situation, like I said, it would have been... In fact, most of my colleagues sitting in similar seats as mine would have actually taken the opportunity to blast their districts out of the water to try and gain... I'm not sure what the word is, but they think it makes them look good for their members. I don't know, maybe it does, but I find that my job, and I think my colleagues on the other side of the district side view our jobs as to be problem solvers and doing what's best for our members, our employees, wherever that relationship to the people in the district is. And I think that's important, because I think we come to very, very good solutions relative to, like I said, what happens in other districts. And I won't go into details, because what's important is, we solved it, and we solved it really in a very, very good manner, and without a whole lot of outside ruh-rah, as we say in Wisconsin. So I think that's important. And I'm saying that because I have contacted the federal mediation services, we've talked about this, to give us some training, because there's a lot of new people on both sides and a lot of seats here on the collaborative, really, model that we use here in the district. And I just want to remind us of how important that relationship really is, and how different and unique we are here in St. Lucie County in the problem-solving models that we use. I'm also going to say this, a little bad with the good, we also have really, really cut down on the number of grievances and arbitrations that we have over the past few years, and I'm actually very proud of that. I don't, again, I don't like that kind of work, I like to think I'm good at it, but I don't like it. I will say we've got one arbitration coming up that I really think maybe our collaborative relationship can benefit us there as well, because I'd like to solve that before we actually go to arbitration. I've shared the situation with a couple of the board members up there, and hopefully I'll get a chance to meet with you individually the rest and share it, because I think it's something that we can solve without spending the resources and time that we need to go to arbitration. And I think that's all I have this evening, except to say to you and everybody here in the audience, and my members, and everybody really in our district and the community is, Merry Christmas, and I hope that you have a great Christmas and holiday season. And naturally, all I have to say this evening, I'll keep it short. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. And that was something that me and Mr. Freeland had discussed a couple months back, is having a collaboration training, and board members, if this comes to fruition, hopefully that we're part of that process, because we did that years and years and years and years ago, about 15 years ago, 14 years ago. We did it, I remember sitting at Central High School doing that, and found it very enlightening as a board member to understand my role as a board member, but also understand the process in which we're trying to negotiate. So thank you, and hopefully that we can put that together. Moving forward, CWA report. Seeing no one here, let's go ahead and move to our St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, Ms. Taylor Daniel, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Most definitely.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, school board members, and Superintendent Prince. My report for this month will be relatively brief, as the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council is preparing for our final meeting of the 2022 year, which will be graciously hosted by St. Lucie West Centennial High School tomorrow at 3:30 PM. As a council founded on a problem-solution-based narrative, we are focused on directing our discussions in the coming months to assess not only the needs of the students in the district, but how we can work in conjunction with district personnel and departments to have our district improvement initiatives come to fruition. Further, we look forward to electing the vice chairperson of the council at the upcoming meeting and discussing means to create open communication with all St. Lucie Public School students. Unlike my Gen Z counterparts, I'm not really well-versed in using social media platforms, which is funny coming from someone born in a generation that has 24/7 access to Internet whenever I want. However, many of our outstanding council members are really well-versed, and we will appoint a Communication Outreach Committee at our next meeting to expand this council's social media presence as well as our communication efforts. And as always, I want to thank the school board for the opportunity to speak, and your openness to communicating and collaborating with students within our district, and wishing everyone in our district and your families a happy holiday season and a wonderful New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Excellent. Moving forward to our consent agenda, board members, do you have anything to pull? Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent, can I have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda items as submitted.
Board members, you have the recommendation of the Superintendent, can I get a motion?
So moved to approve the agenda as submitted.
I got a motion, do I have a second? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent, your report, please.
Okay, just a couple of exciting events. I want to thank a couple of board members that accompanied me to recognize our finalists for the Distinguished Minority Educator of the Year, and Dr. Donna Mills, and also Mrs. Hawley were able to join me for those. Brian Hoss, the music band teacher at St. Lucie West Centennial, Kim Herring-Nance, a social studies teacher at Fort Pierce Central, and Renee Hawkins, a gifted teacher at Fairlon. We visited those teachers and congratulated them at the Night of the Stars. One of them will be recognized as our winner, so we were really excited to pay those visits. Also, we had our outstanding first-year finalists, we recognized those. It was a busy day the other day when all of us went and traveled around the district, kind of barging into classrooms and saying congratulations when the superintendent, board members, and a whole team of TV folks come in. It is a little jarring at first, but it's a great opportunity for us to recognize, and especially in front of the students. Emily Morgan is a music teacher at Mariposa, we went into her room, Jennifer Monte, seventh grade teacher at Westgate K-8, and it was really cool, because Jennifer's an outstanding first-year teacher finalist, and her sister and her mother are also teachers at the school, which was really exciting, to be able to share that happiness with them as well. And then Crystal Gamaz, a fifth grade teacher at Sam Gaines. I also wanted to mention also that we have our Magnet and School Attractor applications open now, we want to make sure families get those in, because that window is open. I wanted to recognize a couple of new APs, and if they are here today, please stand, but you were approved, you're now officially... And, let's see, hang on, new AP at Lawnwood is Felicia Diaz, and she was the TSA at Weatherby, so congratulations, very happy for you. Felicia, do you have any family here? Where are they? Okay, are there anybody here in the room? Okay, all right. And, okay, congratulations, very, very happy for you. And Sarah Armada is an AP at Fort Pierce Central High School, and she was a coach. Sarah, I'm assuming you have family here tonight? Okay? Congratulations, we're so happy for you, and thank you, and I'm glad that your family could share in that. Speaking of family, you know, sharing, is I've got a special guest in our audience tonight, my son Maverick is here from the University of Florida. I thought, yes, I thought he paid a surprise visit to me, but he did not. He came here to see his favorite teacher, Mrs. DeMayo, and who's the sponsor of our leadership committee, and I wanted to recognize that simply because Ms. DeMayo had such an important role in Maverick's formation as a young adult, and it's that kind of thing that all of our teachers do, all of our teachers, the 3,000 teachers across our district have such an impact, and I want to thank those teachers, and not just teachers, but everybody that comes into contact with a child in our school district, be it food service, be it a maintenance person, be it a school clerk, paraprofessional, they all, a bus driver, they all impact the child's experience at school, and I can say that they're getting a first-class public education in St. Lucie Public Schools. So I want to wish all of our employees a very wonderful holiday, be safe, and Happy New Year. I also want to wish our board members a happy holiday as well. I appreciate each and every one of you, because you make coming to work wonderful every day for me. And lastly, I want to thank my leadership team, because basically, they're, you know, their work every day and the outstanding product they put out every day is, I'd like to think it's a direct reflection of me, but they're all wonderful each and every way, and I want to thank them as well, because I really appreciate you. And that concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorney's report?
Thank you, Chair Ingersoll, members of the board, and superintendent. I don't have a report tonight, but I would like to wish everybody a very happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead, school board members report, Dr. Mills?
Well, I just kudo everything that Dr. Prince said. We can't thank our district staff and people and family enough for your labor every single day in public schools and with our students. There was one AP that came in the day that I had been thinking about all week, and was wondering, you know, how she was doing, and here she was today, accepting the award for along with her school. So we just want to thank each and every one of you, because we are the board of, we are the board, but you are the... "No, Ms. Richardson, it's my team." Amazing. So, thank you so very much. I wanted to kind of talk about, piggyback on the bus drivers. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Mitch Miller. He drove us, he drove that bus. And he is, he is one of the, I guess, loyal. He is so committed. And one thing about Mr. Miller is, he loves his job. He loves what he does. And that, when we talk about the bus drivers and they are the first person that our kids see, if they get that love that he has, then that makes for a good day for our kids, don't it? You know, so to our bus drivers, I want to say thank you. Normally, when I'm sitting here, I'm saying teachers and, you know, teachers. But when I say teachers, I think it's what Mrs. Rodriguez, one day, she says educators, she said to me. So, it's not, when I say teachers, I'm really talking to our educators, you know, the maintenance staff, they, you know, everybody, or cafeteria staff, you know? Because if those kids, my daughter, when she's hungry, she's angry, she's very angry. We got to feed her right away, okay? So, a child needs to be fed, and so they're getting the good food. So, it's, we are feeding the whole person, the whole person when they come to St. Lucie County Schools, right? So, I just really wanted to say thank you to our maintenance. They're doing an amazing job. I've been walking to some of the schools, and they are doing, I think, a very amazing job. So, I wanted to say to Mr. Max Sweet, "Thank you so very much." The team, "Thank you so very much for the amazing job that you're doing here as well." This week, we, I had the opportunity to, we had a principal's luncheon, and I was late. And so, I came in and I sat in the back. But, you know, yeah, so I came in and I sat in the back. There was one table with one young lady sitting there by herself, so I figured I'd just join her. And so, in talking, you know, we just started a conversation, and we just, you know, got to know each other. So, there are two things that happened while I was sitting in the back. I got to see our principals. And that was a vantage point back there, okay? I didn't know our principals. I was, it was hysterical, you had to have been there. The things Lydia Martin had them doing was, and they did it to my surprise. They were doing it. They partook in everything. These kids could only see our principals. They would not believe that those were principals, you know? But it was, I, it was, for me, it was eye-opening, you know, that they jumped in, they are such a team player, you know? It was amazing, it was really amazing. That was one thing that happened for me. And then talking to this young lady, she told me a story about her children. Her son, she says, thinks the mailman is Santa Claus. Why? You know? She said, "Well, you know, in this age, the mailman brings packages. He brings presents, right, just like Santa Claus does." So, he thinks that the mailman is Santa Claus. So, when he's doing something good, he tells her, "Tell the mailman," you know, "when you're good, if you're good or," you know? So, he wants her to tell the mailman that he's doing awesome. When he's not listening, he says, "Don't tell the mailman." He says, "I listen," you know? And I thought to myself, wow, you know, children, they say the darnedest things. But that's how naive and how trusting these children are, you know? So, and I thought, you know, this is, going forward anymore, I would like to sit in the back when we're having, I'd like to sit with you. I want to get to know everybody, because I'm telling you, that story will always be up here. And the mailman, I'm going to be looking at him a little differently now, you know? And I will remember him, and I'll remember her, just the same way I remember Maverick. He probably left. No, he's still there. The story is his dad told me about him, you know? So, I want to take the time to get to know you. I'm going to sit with you, if you don't mind, at these occasions. I don't need to sit up front, I want to sit with you. So, thank you so very much for that. Also, I want to talk a little bit about equity, you know? I'd forgotten, I was having a conversation with my daughter, and we were talking, and she says, you know, "Mom, it's, it's," I was talking about equality, she says, "No, Mom, it's equity." And for me, equity, literally, when I sit here, I can't see you. I have to do like this, or I have to do like this, or I have to do like this. But if I sit on this cushion, if I sit on it, then I can see you, and you can see me. That's equity. That's equity. So, this year, going forward, because she has taught me what equity is, literally, that's what I'm focusing on, I'm going to be focusing on this year. Not that we don't have it, right? But I want to make sure that each child has that cushion where she can, I can see you, and you can see me. That's very important going forward. We're going to stress, we're going to make sure that every child, not that it's not happening, but we're going to make sure that nobody's falling through the cracks. That's what I'd like to do. That's what I'd like to do. That discussion, this question, because she brought that to my attention. Having said all of that, I just wanted to say to each and everybody, Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas. A very happy and blessed New Year. And, you know, our attorney sits right here. She is so quiet sometimes. I forget that she's here, but Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Richardson. And just to echo what all the other board members have said, to our 5,000 employees, thank you. Thank you for a good year. Thank you for your dedication to our students. Thank you for our dedication and communication to our parents in making this organization as successful as it is. Because it wasn't, it's just not the principals, it's just not the administrators, it's just not the bus drivers, it's just not the board members. It's everybody working together, understanding the process and the roles to make this organization to be up and coming and a very successful one, reaching all students, no exceptions. So, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. And we're going to go ahead and move on to our scheduled speakers. Ms. Dale Galliano, please. Ms. Attorney Molly Shadak will be our timekeeper, and if you just would state your name for the record, please.
Dale Galliano, Fort St. Lucie. We're coming up to the end of the year. It's kind of exciting. Who would have thought? I mean, it would go so quickly. This past Sunday, I was at the Treasure Coast Christians Alliance, their sixth annual, really quite wonderful. And to my surprise, as they're blinking up onto the screens and that sort of stuff, there came St. Lucie County School Board. Dr. Prince was named there. And a scripture, which I thought was quite apropos, especially now with this season. "If your good gift serving others, serve them well. If you are a teacher, teach well. If your gift is encouraging others, be encouraging. If it is giving, give generously. If God has given you leadership ability, take the responsibility seriously. And if you have a gift for showing kindness to others, do it gladly." That's Romans 12:7 through 8. We're coming up to the end of the year, and it's already been told to me that come January, the big decision's going to be made. I've also been told that the superintendent has nothing to say on it, because it was already deemed by Mr. Gent. So, I'm making my last appeal on fiction books. We have kids that are out there, one out of every five girls right now in the nation are cutting themselves on a regular basis. Suicides are up, bulimia is up, anorexia is up, and it's both in boys and girls. There's stresses that kids are scared that we're going to, they're going to die because of climate change in their lifetime. It's all scary out there, between the codes that are running in the schools and all the different things. I really don't see where these books are something that we have to have there for the kids. It's fiction. It's fiction. It's not something that they can have down the way, that they can have the responsibility as good working people or as good parents or as good, any, just citizens of this nation or this community. I'm hoping that over the Christmas holidays that you will be able to think of these things and say to yourselves, "All right, it's 11 books that we really don't need in this county. Let the other counties fight this out and deal with all the crazy. Let's just look out for our kids. Make them so that they feel secure, that there's not something that a parent has to figure out, whether they're opting in or opting out or whatever, all the nuts and stuff that's going on in the world right now. We don't need anything to add to it." So, I'm hoping that when the workshop comes in January, I'll be here. And I'm hoping that when it comes to the board meeting in January, that the word will be from all of you, "Get rid of the books. They're fiction. It's not necessary. Let's teach our kids the math and the English and the history and the wonderful things that they can put to good use." And for myself, and I know for my cohorts that have come for the past year and year and a half and that, we wish you only the best for this Christmas season and the New Year. We wish you health, prosperity, clear thinking, and lots and lots of laughter. God bless you.
Thank you, Mrs. Galliano. Ms. Susan Sedano?
I have nothing to say. I'm just, you're a Christmas doll, you're a happy holiday.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Eddie Evans?
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you so much. Well, at this time, we're going to adjourn. Have a happy holiday.